This has saved the taxpayers of Coleman County $1 million a year for years I've been in. So we have to continue to look at things like that to save money and grow the economy. This is how we're going to have a few extra dollars to invest in county activities.
Mr. Watson, you'll be up first for question number four. Let's talk about the sheriff's inmate bill money for just a minute. The state allows sheriffs across the state to receive and distribute money for inmate bills. After some of that money comes from the state, the federal dollars, depending on what inmates they have as taxpayers. So after obligations are met, the sheriff can use or keep the remainder as that person sees fit. Why doesn't the county commission take responsibility for the distribution of these funds and take that political ball out of sheriff's race, out of that office, since it is taxpayers' dollars? And what's your solution to it?
Now, as much as I know about this, I'm thinking that there's legislation that gives the sheriff the right to collect that money. Because I think years ago, the sheriffs, that was part of their pay. They considered that part of their pay. So as far as I don't really, I'm not even really saying what I would do with that type of legislation and see what we could do as far as legally doing that.
For many, many years, that's the way the system's been set up. I've been in law enforcement for 47 years, so I knew my little bit about that. But that's the way the system is set up. The sheriff is an elected official, and that is his money, the way it's set up, to do with what he wants to do with it. I know our current sheriff has spent a lot of that money on different projects. He has given some scholarships to Wallace and such as that. And so, you know, I don't think as a county, if I'm elected to county commission, you know, I don't think it's my right to tell him what he can and can't do with that. That's the way the system is set up. It's going to have to be changed, not only county commission, it's going to have to be changed statewide or even on federal level. So, you know, I'm not going to say that if I'm elected, I'm going to start taking this money away. I think our current sheriff has used that money in a proper manner. So, you know, however he sees fit to use that, that's the way the system is been set up.
Wish I could answer that question for you, but I haven't been involved in law enforcement much about that issue. Apologize.
I believe if I understand the question right, if the county commission bids a jail food, it will cost Coleman County, public county taxpayers, about three times what we give the sheriff to the person for food in the jail. Sheriff can purchase the food, a third one the county commission can buy it for, because if we bought the inmate jail food, we would have to bid it. Or he don't have to bid it. He can go out here and buy it where I have grocery, Win-Dixie, wherever. But we're limited on what we can do. Anytime we spend tax dollars, we have to have a bid, a fair, equal bid, and we have to put that to bid. And if the sheriff saves money, you know, by doing it the way we're doing it, he can afford to buy his own cars, he can afford to buy equipment for the sheriff's department, you know, there's a win-win situation all the way through. Thank you.
Mr. Graves.
It is a unique situation, the way Alabama's allowed to do function in this matter as far as the food is concerned at the jail. I came with the county in 1996, the commission was doing it themselves. It was chaos, continually trying to figure out how much to order, how much to get, what to get. Prisoners would be, "I'm sick, I've got a certain problem, you know, I've got to have this kind of food or that kind of food, doctor says this and that, whatever." And we wrestled with this situation, I guess probably for about four years. And Tyler Roden came over one day and he said, "James, why don't you let us have that money and let us do it, and we'll be fully responsible. Simply keep giving us what you're giving us right now and nothing else, and we'll take it from there." Other counties were already doing it. I think what Kerry was speaking of at one time was, well, the commission was controlling it, but the commission had the authority to give it up if they so desired. Well, Tyler took it over, and in a short timeframe, copying what these other counties were doing, they had that jail running in a fantastic mode, they had enough food down there, whatever, and yet it was excess. The law allows him to keep the excess and use it on whatever he deems fit. When Mike Rainey was elected, came in, and he told me, he said, "I don't want nothing to do with that money. Just, you know, take it away or give it to something, whatever, I don't want it. I don't want to be a thinger of that, that I'm taking this money, you want to buy me a car or anything else, you know, whatever." I heard, and I said, "Mike, if you don't want it, but let me tell you, the commission can never buy you as many cars as you need the sheriff's department. Keep the money, donate it to the sheriff's department," or like some of you said, "he donated out of Wallace College or good entities of this nature, but you're going to need vehicles that we can't afford to buy for you. So use the money for that matter." But I support it 1,000 percent. I am for 100 percent let the sheriff keep doing it, and as long as he will, commission is happy as far as I'm concerned.
I've been told through Mr. Graves, I've heard part of stories from county commission was furnishing food down there, and on a great expense it was to the county commission. A few moments ago, I spoke about how we can save money at the commission, and this is one of the good, another good example of how we can save money at the commission, is by letting the sheriff handle the food money. We set up that way in most every county in the state operates that way, and as James says, if there is any excess money, then he has that discretionary money to purchase equipment, vehicles, or whatever he needs in there. It just, so as I've heard, it was not a good situation when the county tried to do it, and it ended up costing the county a lot more money than it did the sheriff to feed the prisoners.
You know, I'm all for keeping our law enforcement, our sheriff department as top-notch as we can. We've got to do that. But to allow one man to have control of that much money without any say-so on what happens is putting that man in a situation you should never put that man in. Now, when I say that, I don't necessarily think that the commission should go back and say, "We're going to take this money, we're going to manage before you manage the bills." I think that should be left up to the sheriff. But why is there such an excess? If there's a big excess from that money, then we're not managing our money right. So I think that's something needs to be looked closer. The sheriff's department already has five discretionary funds without the money. So that's what we've got to do as commissioners, is we've got to manage, and we've got to have plans. If you come into this race not knowing what your vision is and not knowing what your thoughts is when you go into office, then you need to reevaluate what you're doing. And you need to go back and start doing research and find out what the county needs, and find out where we failed at, find out what they're doing right, and let's improve them. Let's find out what they're doing wrong, let's change it. Thank you.
All right, next question will be first for Mr. White. There can be a perceived problem sometimes in county employment, that there is a nepotism issue. I'd like to know if you believe that that perception is indeed reality, and if it is, what would you do about that?
What do you phrase that?
Is nepotism a problem in county employment? And if so, how would you handle, address that issue?
Tell us what nepotism is.
Family hirings, when you're looking within departments, not necessarily, I mean, when you're in a small town, that's an issue you deal with, but in direct supervisory situations.
Well, I do know that there are a lot of different family members that work for Coleman County, some brothers, some sisters, and cousins, and, you know, I guess my opinion would be that if there's an opening, hire the best person for that job. You know, if it turns out to be a family member, I guess if, you know, they're the best person for that job, I see nothing wrong with it. You know, I'm not convinced that we need to, as commissioners, that we need to hire our next of kin. And even though they could be the best person for the job, I think that should be up to the supervisor of that department. Just say it was open in the road department, and some of my kin folks put an application in, if he may be the best man for the job, I'd leave that up to the people that actually want to say, "Yeah, I think he'd be the right fit for this position." But, you know, to have brothers and sisters, and, you know, I do believe someone could show some bites. And so personally, I would want to stay away from that and not get involved directly. And, you know, my sister's retired school teacher, my brother, he runs his own business, and so I doubt I'd have opportunities to hire anyone with that.
I don't believe in the biddy-biddy system. I don't believe in going to hire somebody just because you're your friend, I don't believe in hiring because you're relatives, or that gets wrong or think it's dirty. You hire the person because of your job experience. You hire them because of the job that you know they're capable of doing.
That is an issue in the county, and we hired a human resource officer that goes through that, and, you know, it's in the county manual, but you can't work a brother's sister under your direct supervision or close relative. I'm like everybody else, if a person is in the job, I think you ought to get it, but sometimes you want to stay away from hiring your brother or your close relative. I certainly want to have an HR person, let them decide who does the best bit for the job.
Mr. Yobrak. No, I'm sorry, that was Mr. Graves, I'm sorry. Yeah, Mr. Graves, your next.
The problem of nepotism or that relationship of your hiring your relatives and so forth, it can be a touchy situation. I've seen it at the courthouse where a mother worked at one end and a daughter worked at the other end, and it was a constant, you know, "What are you doing?" and so forth. Or the child had some problems, whatever, mother wanted to be involved in, none of her business, the daughter worked for somebody else. But at the same time, I would have to agree, you post jobs, are you going to disqualify neighbors because they're related to you to some extent? You know, let the road department, sanitation, water, county commission, whoever hire based on who they want, because they're not going to be under you as far as the commission's concerned, direct supervision, they don't get under that department head. We have a personnel handbook in Coleman County that regulates this as far as what we're supposed to be doing. Every new job is supposed to be posted, clearly open to the public for 10 days, taken down, and the applications looked at, and then the best person's supposed to be chosen by using the three commissioners you have, and then the job is awarded after that. Sometimes we can, within departments, say the water department, the road department, or whatever, or from, say, we want to transfer somebody from the road department to the water department, vice versa, while that poses a job, because it's a direct transfer if somebody is not, you know, senior to them. Those things happen, and that's perfectly okay. But, yeah, I would have to say, I think our handbook, as long as it's observed and enforced the way it's supposed to be, I would say that that works just fine with Coleman County right now. I would not change that.
I guess I'll take a different approach. I feel very strongly about a nepotism policy. Even though a person's hired in a different department, my experience has been, it's not long to be getting folks into the same department. And I just think it's a good idea to not hire close relatives. I've seen situations where this has caused some problems. And, you know, the electric co-op has an extremely strong policy about nepotism. I don't think I would go far as there, but I think it would be an advantage for Coleman County to have a nepotism policy. I know as long as I've been in, to my recollection, we have not hired any relatives. And I think it's worked county good, and when an opening comes, my philosophy is, is let that department head that has an opening go find the person who is the best qualified for the job, and someone that they can work with, and whoever they recommend, that's who I'm going to vote to hire in that position. If they end up with a not-so-good worker, it's going to be their fault from up there. So I think that this department has a strong say-so in that, in the hiring, but I'm in favor of a good, strong nepotism policy.
I'm also in favor of a strong nepotism policy. I have a sister that works for the park system currently, but if I go in as commissioner, she won't be working directly for me, because there's a manager or department head that's over the park system. So she won't be working directly for me. Now, if you look back, I did a statistic on this, there's 12% of employees work for Coleman County right now that has relatives that works in the system. It may be ironed that the sum of it up. Now, 12% don't seem like a high number, you know, but we've, our county administrator's got a daughter that works for Coleman County, and that's good. I think she does a good job, I think he does a good job. She don't work for him. So we should have good, strong nepotism policy to divert any problems, because problems could arise from this. Now, with that said, our policies when it comes to employees, I think they improve. I think we need to get away from this merit system. We've got to go on a system that's fair to all employees. A person shouldn't work for the county for two years in the same grade as another person that's been working for the county for 10 years, and the person working two years make more money. Now, if you want to affect employees' morale, if you want to affect employees' morale, then you get on a fairer system. If you want to affect their morale, take away or affect their mood, that'll affect their morale. So let's get on a fairer system across the board. That would be what I would want to get to be. Thank you.
I would be for a strong nepotism rule. I don't think we need, you know, I don't think it's good if you've got a relative that's under you, maybe a supervisor, that you're their supervisor. I don't have a problem with relatives working as long as you're not supervising that person. I think we need to keep the relatives that way. You're not too much going to make that call if it comes up. And I think it should be able that when you put in for a job, you do hire the best person. And if that is a relative, that's fine. But I think it should always be, you should have to look at that and make sure that it's not a relative, that where it's going to be a conflict, where something does happen, and that's your relative, you've got to make that call. Because I would hate to be the one to let my son or daughter and cousin or somebody go for my job. And, you know, it's hard not to let anybody go for my job, and that would definitely be hard. That would be my opinion on that. Thank you.
Okay, next question, Mr. Williams will be up first. Okay, Coleman County is second in the state for the number of road miles, behind Jefferson County, but has about a quarter of the road funding available. And the state distributes its gas tax revenue by county population, so we're always going to be way behind there, at least in our lifetimes. Would you consider as a county commissioner abandoning some of the roads that the county tries to maintain now for the sake of getting more use of the dollars that we do now?
Well, that's something, if I like it, I'm looking into with the other members of the commission. There is a road that only has one household on it, and it's a county road, which I don't think they have it like that. But if there's any that only have one or two households on it, I think maybe they should consider abandoning it to save the money, use it somewhere else, the roads need to be repaired.
I don't believe in abandoning roads, it's already in our system, because everybody, even if they have one house on one road, and it is considered county road, they're, you know, they're taxpayers, they buy gas just like everybody else. We just have to work the system sometimes. We have to prioritize the road that's a little rougher than the one you live upon, and, you know, that's something that we have to do, and it's our decision, or the commission's making, saying, you know, "We can't move that road this year, we can't move it, we need to do this up here, it's a lot worse check." But to abandon roads just because we don't have dollars to work on, you know, we can always grade a road or put a little gravel on it to make it satisfiable for everyone. You might not live on a paved road, but if you live on a bare road, it is a county maintaining road, I think we need to do that.
You're getting them last questions still asking. It hurts somebody's feelings when we just start talking about stuff like that. You know, I look at the law, county people probably have more for this than the social commissioners, because it changes a lot, but it's hard to abandon a road. I mean, you've got to go through public hearings and all that good stuff, and if people want to use that as a cut-thin road or something of this nature, they have rights, that one person that's on that road has got pretty much agreed before you can abandon that road. Our policy should be, to me, and we're talking about, you know, utilization of our money, we've stated, we will never, ever have enough money from fuel tanks, ever, to take care of all of our roads properly. That means paving them and maintaining them and keeping them up to par, whatever. You will never, not when you rank second or third in total road mileage, but you rank 15th, 12th to 15th somewhere down there, on fuel tax revenue. You'll never have enough money to take care of all these roads, and it's been a tendency of commissioners coming in to bust the hearts, they may have paralysis to somebody, and they'll go down there and they'll pave a gravel road or two, and we'll add to it, add to it, add to it. I'm not accusing these people right now of doing this, because I don't know, but I know others in the past have. But to me, there's got to be a criteria that states that certain roads are major arteries of the county, 222 is one of our major arteries in Coleman County, 747 on the east side. Those roads have got to be paved, there's a lot of people living on them, a lot of traffic, not just folks that live on those roads. So you've got to list your major arteries, your major farm-to-market roads, and those have got to be taken care of. But even then, you've got an option, do you put asphalt on those roads, do you chip seal them, or do you simply gravel them and keep them paved nicely, and then once in a while bring in loads of gravel and smooth them up again? That third alternative, that is our choice in Coleman County, because we will never, if you go out here and pave this road this year, then you're neglecting five other roads over here that needs paving bad, and you're not going to be able to get it done. So we've got to make a choice in the matter, not going to get popular, if these roads are going to remain gravel roads, these roads here will be maintained with chip seal, and we'll asphalt these certain roads here. And then you'll have good transportation, and you'll know where you stand in the county, you'll know when you build a house on that road, what you're going to be facing down the road. The bell ringing?
Mr. Hicks. I think everyone understands that we'll never solve the road problems in Coleman County. It would please everyone in the county. We did a little estimating a while back, and, you know, I believe, we said that it would take the entire county budget, close the jail down, and fire the sheriff, and shut the courthouse down and everything, and it'd take about four or five years. If we took all the money, then we might get the roads coming apart. Well, you know, that's not going to happen. But I agree with James, we don't have to, or we do, we prioritize roads. You've got your main arteries to connect these state roads, 69, 31, and 278, and these are roads, these are classified as federal aid roads, and these roads are graded, and we're held to a standard to keep those roads at a certain standard. And that's why sometimes you say, "Well, they're asphalt-ing this road here, and mine's falling apart." There's certain rules that you've got to go by when you start paving roads, so you have to kind of follow those. And we do the best we can, and I tell people, eventually we get around to you.
You know, I want everybody to understand that when I make statements about problems we have, that there's never any of my statements that are directed toward the three commissioners that we have on each other's standing, because I'm not, I happen to disagree with their policies in the way that they've dealt with us, okay? That don't mean I disagree with anything that deals with their character or anything like that. That's the reason I'm reluctant, okay? Now, when you come to the road problem, I was always taught, never say never. There is solutions to the road problems in Coleman County. There is. Now, it's not going to be an overnight fix, it's a way-long-down road fix out there. My friend, Mike, used to say, "Way-long-down road." If you ride around in this county, we've already abandoned some of our roads, you know, so, no, I don't think we should abandon any of our roads, but we've got to get smarter about the way that we do races. We've got to manage at the lowest level and start implementing good plans and putting these plans out to the people, so that they'll know that in 2016, their road is going to be looked at to be paved, okay? We've got to look down the road so that we know that in 2018, the people that live on this road is probably going to be looked at to be paved. We've got to have a good ditching program. We've got to have a good brush clearing program. We've got to get our roads to drainage right, get our bases right, and we've got to start paving roads in Coleman County. We've got to do a better job than we're doing in the past. There is a fix to the problem. If there's not a fix, then we need to find a fix. Thank you.
I would never want us to abandon a road, because I agree that, you know, every person pays taxes, and every person deserves to have their road worked on and maintained. I think one of our problems is we need to maintain a good maintenance program. I talked with a retired state engineer, and he told me that one of the problems that he's always seen in Coleman County is the maintenance. And our maintenance has never been where we need to be. I think that's something that I would really work hard with, is the maintenance program when we get in there, is to keep our shoulders off, get the water off the pavement, because if water drains down the pavement, it causes us to separate, and that's where you see a spider web, and once it starts doing that, that's when the roads start coming apart. So if we can stop that part, maybe we can slow down some of the erosion on the asphalt, and we can move from there. Thank you.
Well, I do think there are appropriate times that the county should abandon the road, and I'll give you a perfect example. In my neighborhood, there's a dirt road with no residents on it, it runs from County Route 810 to County Route 825, there's three property owners, but no property on that road. All three property owners petitioned the county commission to close that road. Every time it came to big rain, it washed the bridge out, the county was constantly going out there and doing the gravel and grating that road. And it's just, they did a fantastic job of it, the next time it came to big rain, everybody went up to wash it right back out again, and it was... else walked right back out again, and it was not their fault. But the thing is, the three property owners petitioned to get that road closed, and it took about two years, but the road was finally closed. I think that was a small decision, it was a waste of money, the road went nowhere, all it was a strip, a cut through. Some of the neighbors didn't like it too much, but the three property owners...